The United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Council President Peterson. By the way, I might want to check your microphone, make sure that's on. There you go.
I typically don't need one, Scott.
There you go. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to recognize a key leader here in the city of Fishers. Most of the time, you would see him up here celebrating one of his employees and their accomplishments in their tenure at the Fishers Police Department. But tonight, we're, we had the opportunity to recognize Chief Ed Gephardt for 25 years of service to the city of Fishers. To give you an idea of what 25 years of commitment to public safety in the city of Fishers can encapsulate, this is an individual that came from out west here to Indiana and started in our patrol division and then worked his way up to training and recruiting. So he's, you know, he has his thumbprints on not only his own career, but on an awful lot of other careers here in the Fishers Police Department. And then took a giant leap forward and became our patrol commander. So if you know much about the police department, one of the most demanding jobs is, Major Jones will tell you right now, and Assistant Chief Taylor would tell you from a couple of years ago, is being over the patrol division. Every day, 24 hours a day, there are, you know, several dozens, 50, 60, 70, 80, police officers that need your attention at the beck and call as well as 100,000 residents. Chief Ed Gephardt took that jump from a sergeant all the way up to patrol commander, which is a major, major leap. And he excelled in that role, ultimately be becoming the assistant chief of the Fishers Police Department. And then ultimately our police chief, and I've had the honor to work alongside him now for the better part of six years now, Ed, as police chief. And let me tell you, one of the challenges I gave Ed when he became the police chief is I said, I have unfair expectations of our department heads. One, you have to be a leader within your department. Two, you have to be a leader within the organization. And three, you have to be a leader within the region or the state. And if you look at how he's led his department, I think the men and women that work there would attest to him being a leader to his own department. Two, I think unequivocally, he's a leader among his peers and department heads in our organization. And three, he's really become a leader throughout central Indiana and throughout the state on things like crime guns and really creating the Crime Gun Intelligence Center. I mean, everywhere you look, Ed's put his thumbprint on a variety of different initiatives, and we're safer and better for it. And so I want to thank Ed from the bottom of my heart for all the work and commitment he's had. And I want, more importantly, I want to thank Amy, his wife, who's here and her commitment to allowing him to spend as many hours and as much time as he has committed to the safety of our residents. So without further ado, Chief Ed Gephardt.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Ed, for your service. Appreciate it. Okay, now you can leave and go watch the Pacers. Mayor's Youth Academy, class of 2025. Looks like it's going to be Ross. No? I thought it would be Scott.
Well, so I will take a moment here and just tell you that each and every year, we have the Mayor's Youth Academy, which I'm very, very excited about. These folks have to sharpen their pencils and really sharpen their minds about how to articulate public policy positions. So each meeting, after they learn about a particular area of public sector, they're then posed a public policy question, and they have to argue basically what their, what their stance is. This group excelled above all others in their position on a variety of different fronts. And so they were given the opportunity to come up with something that they would like to advocate for to each and every one of you. So let's hear what they have to say.
Is that was okay on the screen?
Yep.
Okay.
Nope, you guys are good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so as the mayor said, we are members of Group One from the Mayor's Youth Academy, and my name is Zoe Newell.
I'm Ryan Zebres.
I'm Wussy Pratt.
And I'm Brendan.
And throughout the past year, every month, we've come together to visit and learn about different parts of our city government. And following these visits to places like the firehouse, police station, and different charities, we were asked to answer a policy question related to each place we visited. Okay, so we came up with this idea for a zipline following our visit with the Fishers Department of Public Works. And our policy question asked us to envision a third place for Fishers residents. And our final idea was a zipline. This idea is inspired by one of our group members' visits to a zipline in Eagle Creek, something that he very much enjoyed. And so a zipline in Fishers would be a fun, interesting, and new way to get residents outside and participating in their community. And ziplines are appealing to residents of all ages, something that was, was a priority for this question, and something many people probably not got on the chance to experience. Getting involved in the outdoors provides a great way to relieve stress and takes some time away from screens and technology. And additionally, the zipline can serve as a way for families, friends, and workplaces to come together and develop their communities through different activities. So our zipline works to continue Fishers' vision of a strong, vibrant city that supports and uplifts its residents through its development in our city through using our parks. And yeah.
So why White River? White River is the latest addition of Fishers' long list of parks, making it a great option for the zipline, for our zipline facility. The park has all the space and land needed to construct the required infrastructure and create a fun space for the community, plus the river, or the, plus the river and landscape of the park creates a relaxing atmosphere, better to, which in turn betters the mental health of the visitors. The environmental issue that comes along with building up White River has, has been discussed, and the benefits far outweigh the negatives.
Now, we came up with two options to fund and build the zipline. The first option would be the city and currently cost of $2.1 million to create this zipline facility through a company like GoAid or Skyline Ziplines. And this would cover management and operation of the facility. This allows total control over prices, staffing, hours of operation, and rules of the park. Now, why should you go with this option? The system can manage the ticket prices. Ticket prices can be at a cost that covers maintenance and operations, and it will increase accessibility and community benefit. Why shouldn't you choose this option? Well, the city won't make as much profit with cheaper tickets. However, by surrounding the zipline with other amenities, profit can still be made. The zipline conflicts will bring the community together and especially appeal to the teenage demographic that we're trying to target with this program.
Now, option B, our second option, is to contract a private company to build and manage the zipline at the White River Park. While this option might, is not as appealing as the city loses some control over the facility, it removes having to foot the $2.1 million bill as the outside company would be responsible for the zipline, and the city would just have to lease out the land needed to operate it. Now, why should you choose this option? The city will not have to incur any costs for the zipline, therefore having to not care for the maintenance or staff costs of the facilities. And on top of that, the city would have to get some money, would not, would get some money for leasing the property. Now, why should we not choose this? The cost for admission for our residents would rise as we would, as the city would not have control over the costs of the zipline to access it and stuff, which undermines our goal to get the youth to act, the youth to interact more with each other. And what happens with this option? Fishers won't make as much money if a private company owns a facility, but it will spur more economic development than if the city were to own the facility.
Thank you for your time. Enjoy this on this exciting lecture.
Thank you. Any questions? Bron?
Did you guys investigate the liability insurance business?
Yeah, so we did. That is the initial cost of zipline. And also, if you would...
We listed some companies like GoAid and Skyline Ziplines. They provide annual inspections to make sure that the zip lines stay up, up to date with their maintenance and safety checks.
Any other questions from council? I want to tell you, I told the mayor to put it on the sledding hill when we built the sledding hill. I don't know how many years ago, I said that'd be a great place for a zipline, by the way. I love your idea. I think it's awesome. I don't know which way you want to go, but I think it's a great idea.
That was the first presentation, and then as time went on, we figured White River State Park would be better now that it's officially.
We didn't, we didn't have the White River State Park when we, when I told him to go build it, or he did. So I like the location for you guys as well. So, yep, thank you for your presentation. Thank you for also being part of that mayor's council. Hopefully you find it beneficial.
Thank you.
Great job, everyone.
Thank you. And then we have a student recognition.
Yeah, I'll tee this one up. So as you well know, council, students from Fishers High School and HSC High School graduated earlier this month. As they get ready to set foot across the country and make the mark in the world, we want to recognize one student specifically. So I'm going to ask L. Allwork, the chair of the Fishers Armed Services Commission, to actually introduce Jonathan Tanguera a little more, please.
Mr. Chair, good evening.
Jonathan, as you know, you're a peer on the FASC, and you're a member for the three past years with West Point. Eddie Rivers isn't here tonight, although he wanted to be here. He's in Florida with his wife taking care of an studio item in Orlando. But he asked me if I would say a few words to you tonight in front of the city council and the public as our way of expressing thanks to you for your service to not only the FASC, but what's coming ahead of you as you get ready to go to West Point this month. So I'm going to read Eddie's words to you. He starts off with football. And he says to R Y L A Rotary for Students, to working at CBS, Jonathan, you've been a star. And I'm so proud to have been afforded the opportunity to work with you in your pursuit of the United States Military Academy at West Point. With your determination, energy, and credentials, you are a no-brainer for the academy. I just had to check in on occasion and keep you abreast of the deadlines, which you generally met without me. For that dedication to duty, you not only received an early letter of acceptance, but the first offer of admission in the state of Indiana to West Point. It was a major accomplishment for you and your parents, of which you should be extremely proud. Based on this early performance leading up to the academy admission, I have no doubt that you will not only report on time at the end of this month, but you will absolutely crush Beast Barracks and earn an early recognition for a leadership role in the plebe for the academic year. So, Eddie continues, "Welcome to the start of a long gray line." By the way, he's online tonight watching you, and he'll see you in September at the 45th class reunion of my 1980 graduation and commissioning. And then despite my hesitation, he says, "Go Army, beat Navy." So now, I think, one final thing, as you know, because you were here when we started putting this up, we have, we have a man going from Fishers Armed Services Commission that I'm proud to present to you as the chair of the Armed Services Commission. You've been a city official, congratulations and thank you for your service to this city. You must be very, very proud.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that's absolutely terrific. What a huge deal. Congratulations, young man, and best of luck. As we move on to our council committee reports, finance committee, John.
Thank you, Pete. The finance committee met last Wednesday, and we recommend for approval item 7B on the consent agenda. On the regular agenda, item eight, item nine, and item 10. In addition, we discuss the upcoming budget for this year, which will have some twists and turns due to Senate Bill One, how it will affect our community. But as usual, I'm very confident that we will come out with a very strong budget and in a very strong financial position. So that is our report.
Thank you, John. Health Department report is online for anyone who wants to read it. Moving on to the consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Do we have Bill Stewart online?
Yes.
Okay, Bill, you're online there? Okay, so we're going to have to do roll call on this stuff. So even on the consent agenda too, Chris?
Take consent by consent and then do the rest.
So I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll move on to regular agenda items. Number eight, Lisa Bradford.
Hi, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. I'm going to talk about items eight and 10 because they're related to the Gray Eagle project. So for your reference, item eight is the final step for approval of the Gray Eagle tax increment financing district. So approval of item eight will create the district and allow the capture of the tax increment financing. And then item 10 is the first reading for the bonds that will be issued pursuant to the development agreement with Gray Eagle. And those are not to exceed $7 million. And that is related to debt that will be issued by the city but purchased by Gray Eagle. So Gray Eagle is on the hook for the actual payment of the bonds, not the city. And then I'm going to have Megan Bobner tell you a little bit more about the project agreement and kind of the timing to refresh everyone's memory.
Thank you. So Gray Eagle, this first came to city council in 2021 as the original project. So this is at the intersection of 126th Street and Cumberland Road. This is a partnership between Gray Eagle Golf Course and J C Hart. So J C Hart is building approximately 155 age-targeted units at that development corner. So it's a mix of traditional apartment multifamily, but then also shared patio homes and duplexes within that development. It's a unique relationship because part of the existing driving range today will actually be repurposed and used for the J C Hart project. So the, the way that the TIF is captured in here as well, and this is related to item eight, is there's actually two different parcels that are being created, one for the golf course itself, and then one for the multifamily itself as well. So those two allocation areas are then what we'll be able to capture tip for and issue those two different bonds. So it's actually approving two different potential bonds, one for the clubhouse itself for no more than $750,000, and then up to $7 million for the multifamily itself as well. Lisa's right, since these are developer purchase bonds, the city isn't on the hook for any of those. There were no other incentives that were provided as part of the project. They anticipate closing in July on all of their financing, including their construction loans, and then commencing construction on both the clubhouse, which will be torn down and rebuilt, from the images that you've probably seen over the years, since this came back in 2024 and went through the entitlement process at that time, as well as the multifamily commencing at that time as well. So happy to answer any questions related to the project or towards the two items that we're asking for consideration.
Is there going to start construction this year?
Yes.
For sure.
Yes.
Thanks, Megan. The only correction's on Brook School Road, not Cumberland Road.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. Yes.
The, that's okay. Any other questions for Lisa and/or Megan?
I'll make a motion approve. John makes a motion. It was a second, second by John.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Aye.
John Wengar?
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Yes.
Selena Stoller?
Yes.
Tiffany DePlessis?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Um.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
And just for the clarification, we do have the two items for that. So first reading.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to skip to item 10 right now and ask for a first reading. John gives it a first reading.
Second.
And we had a second. I don't think we needed one, but that's okay to get one. I think we're on item nine, Lisa, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
The item before you is a resolution for a petition to the Department of Local Government Finance. As the council is well aware, we have, at the city of Fishers, been involved in a very long discussion related to local income tax and how local income tax is distributed in Hamilton County. So on May 6, 2025, House Bill 1427 was passed, which allows counties with at least four municipalities with a population greater than 40,000, and applying some other language related to maximum levy computation to the, excuse me, lowest percentage percentile for the rest of the state, to petition to the Department of Local Government Finance to increase their max levy. This does not increase any tax rates. This does not change anything related to what anyone is paying. What it does is allow the city of Fishers to increase their max levy, which allows us in turn to therefore capture more local income tax. As John alluded to, House Bill One was passed, which changes property tax. This will allow us to increase our local income tax, but not change any effective taxpayers. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Lisa? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and take a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by John, second by Selena. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Yes.
John Wengar?
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany DePlessis?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jennifer. Megan?
Yes, so a few economic development items tonight. The first one is related to three items on here. So I'll provide them a bit over a few as this exciting company that we're bringing to our life sciences industry, and then talk about the three different items related to that. So Mayor Fadness and I were both approached by 111 Group through a local Fishers contact who said, hey, I've got somebody who's interested in bringing their life science company here to Fishers a few months ago, and had a great connection and conversation with Darren and his team on relocating 111 to Fishers. So 111 is a California-based company. They relocated from San Diego to come to Fishers. They specialize in compounding pharma, or compounding peptides. So they are starting their business as a compounding pharmacy. So that is taking different elements and different materials that are manufactured offsite, combining, or combining them all into one single drug and then distributing them that way. What's really exciting about 111 is that they're going to do vertical integration with the compounding pharmaceutical side of the house. So they will have an e-health service that will be within this facility as well, so they can help navigate with patients through this journey of whatever their compounded drug might be. They also plan to eventually expand and be able to manufacture the peptides themselves. So really, really exciting growth plans that 111 and Darren and Lori, who are both here tonight, can, can talk a little bit about. But as you all know, our life sciences industry has been such a key piece of our economic development success over the last five years. So being able to recruit a company not just from California, but an entrepreneur, Darren has started and successfully sold a couple of different companies and is actively choosing to be part of Fishers because of what we're seeing the success for related to our other life science, life science companies. So access to talent, being able to work in close proximity to our research institutions, universities, but then also choosing to be in Fishers because of the partnerships that we're able to create with businesses long-term. So super excited to be able to have them share a bit of their story with you tonight. But as part of the agenda, there, again, there are three items. So the first is the request to approve their economic development agreement. So they have leased the old Juneau Lighting Building at 12,001 Exit 5 Parkway. So that's right off of 121st Street and Cumberland Road on the southwest corner of that intersection. They plan on investing anywhere between $7 and $10 million. That building has sat vacant for four, five years now. And so they need to make improvements to the building itself, but obviously with their compounding pharmacy side of things, they have a significant amount of personal property that they'll be bringing in here as well. It's 130,000 square foot building approximately, and so that gives them plenty of room to then be able to grow into that space, which is a great opportunity for them and then also for us as a great partner to, again, continue to expand outside of just our life science park and throughout Fishers, our life science industry. As part of their economic development agreement, we're requesting approval of a 10-year, 100% vacant building tax abatement. Currently, right now, their tax is around $120,000 a year. And so we're requesting a 10-year approval of that. So that is included in item 12, starting with the declaratory resolution. So that's the first step in approving the abatement for a building. And then we're also requesting a 10-year, 100% personal property tax abatement. They, again, they anticipate significant personal property investments within this facility. In exchange, again, for that investment that they plan, approximately 120 new positions and employees will be in this facility over the next 10 years. Again, great story continues here of, the average salaries here will be approximately $90,000 for those 120 new employees that they will plan to bring to the facility. So Darren and Lori are here tonight, and so I'd love to be able to have them come up, share a little bit of their background, to share why 111 is choosing Fishers.
Thank you. Here are the CEO of 111, Lori Kyle, former CEO. Thank you for your consideration. Couple of things that sound like a California, not one here. Lori's from Southland, on the shore, left Indianapolis, back in Act Two, both graduated in '12, or in '19, and graduated in, sorry, Act Two. I graduated in '19, did some graduate work at I U P Y, and left Indiana with 35 years, or three years, 25 years at California. So having some level of success in the space began to start 111. California's not here recently, regulatory taxes. Moreover, Indiana is, and a homecoming start. Business friendly overall. Obviously, we like our academic affiliation with Purdue and all of the university, as well as proximity to FedEx, incredible talent here in Indianapolis. And just basically from a state tax perspective, much more favorable, and also very humble. And then, we're introduced, Scott knew about the state corridor, prior to this. It was very, very pressed. Companies that exist in the state corridor are very impressive, and very, it's, it's an unusual situation to have collaborative partners within the same. an unusual situation to have collaborative partners within the same proximity. And quite frankly, that's why the base drop, because it would increase the value of our company and the identity of ourselves, we have to do that to keep the shares up. So in essence, we're committed, we're here for the long haul. We obviously made a big leap in acquiring a building to that size, particularly to accommodate the growth from the verticals, in a space that is very promising, very, very big, that, um, we will be, uh, related to, or much for us in the future. So that's just the basic of it. Again, we appreciate the consideration in terms of the video.
Any questions for Darren or Lori? They've, again, been great partners, are excited to be here in Fishers and really haven't stopped moving since the moment we met them of getting operations started and coming here. So again, item eleven is for approval of the economic development agreement. Item twelve is related to the declaratory resolution, so we can start and finalize that abatement process. And then item fourteen is the approval of their statement of benefit. So one will be for the vacant building tax abatement, and then one will be for the personal property tax payment. Happy to answer any questions about the project.
Any questions? Before I congratulate you, I want to take some votes. So let's go ahead and have a, a motion for item number eleven. Motion approved. Motion by John, second by Tiffany. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Delucia?
Aye.
John Wengard?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations, and I wish you both the best, and thank you for choosing Fishers.
Thank you for choosing Fishers.
Welcome back to Indiana.
Right. And then we can go on to item number twelve, since you already covered it, correct, Megan? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on item twelve.
Motion to approve.
By Tiffany, second by?
Me.
Cecilia. Okay, Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Delucia?
Yes.
John Wengard?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart? Motion passes.
Thank you. And then it's also, I'm gonna skip to item fourteen, you covered that as well. I'll entertain a motion on item fourteen.
Motion to approve item fourteen.
Okay, by Tiffany.
Second.
Second by Selena. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Delucia?
Aye.
John Wengard?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart? Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to you for item thirteen, Megan?
Yes. So every year, we have our annual compliance forms that are submitted by companies that have received abatements, whether it's personal property, real property, or vacant building property tax abate, or vacant building tax abatements throughout the city. So this year, we have twenty-four active abatements that we're requesting approval of. Within the exhibits, you'll see the compliance forms submitted by all the companies. There are two, though, that are not in compliance, and we're requesting as part of this termination of those abatements. So one is for Republic Services, and the other is for, and this is Republic, as, it was their customer service center, so it was a call center that was in Two Concourse. They have gone completely remote as part of that, but what's great is we have a tech company, Back Call Direct, that is actually upstairs and has released that space. And then the other building is, was Stanley Security Systems, so they have, they've been purchased by a company called Securitas. They still have a really significant headcount presence up, up off of a hundred and twenty-first, or I guess in exit five Parkway in Fishers, but that property will soon be purchased by a different entity, and so because they are not fulfilling their requirements of their headcount, are asking that we terminate since they continue to have a presence here in Fishers, but just not, can not receive the benefit of the abatement on that property off of Sunlight Drive. But the rest of our companies are all in compliance, exceeding their headcount and investment projections in most cases, so happy to answer any questions on these.
Any questions for Megan? Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Motion by John, second by Selena. Jennifer?
There's a public hearing on this.
Oh, is there a public hearing with us? Okay, I'll open it up for public hearing. Anyone which is speaking this matter, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes in which to speak on this matter. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Now Jennifer will take the vote.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Delucia?
Yes.
John Wengard?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to government miscellaneous, item fifteen. Lindsey?
All right, there we go. Good evening, Council. Lindsey Viddick, Corporation Council. I'm here tonight on the Property Maintenance Code Updates. Let's see. This was quite an extensive undertaking. As you probably noticed, there are around twenty pages of red lines. I will not be going through all of them tonight, but I will give you an overview of what we changed. This was a collaborative effort between Planning and Zoning, the Health Department, Code Enforcement, and myself to go through this code, figure out what was working, what wasn't working, and make those changes. So why did we decide to make these changes now? Well, one thing we noticed was that there are standards that are set in our UDO. However, there's nothing that says, once you set that standard, then you need to keep up that standard. So a lot of these changes are harmonized with UDO. So, you know, if there are, let's say, parking lot standards that are set by the UDO, they are mimicked in this ordinance to say, once you stripe, you have to now keep up the striping. We also wanted to support the rental registration program. As you may remember, one of the criteria for the rental registration program is that you have been basically keeping up your property, you haven't received code enforcement violations, and also it is a criteria for revocation of those permits. So we wanted to make sure we had the most up-to-date and enforceable ordinance that we could have. One thing we did notice as we were going through this is that we had great residential property enforcement standards, but we didn't really have great commercial property enforcement standards. So as you'll see, we have really amped up those commercial property standards. We also included some vacant property requirements. Again, as we went through, we noticed, you know, we didn't really have anything for what should be required for vacant properties. We also included some additional enforcement avenues and departments. This ordinance has not been touched since twenty fourteen. We now have several other departments that have the ability to enforce and have an interest in enforcing, so I'll go over those shortly. And then we also revamped the enforcement remedies and included some new enforcement mechanisms. So one of the things we did was we updated the definitions, we deleted those that are no longer in use, we added several codes of record besides just, you know, building codes. There's several fire codes and other codes that are applicable in Indiana. We included landscape requirements and vacant premises and structures. And then one of the key things we did was we split up residential and non-residential and have non-residential to include HOA on properties in common areas, and that will probably make a little bit more sense as we go through the common, I'm sorry, the commercial property requirements. And one of the other things that we talked about quite a bit was, okay, well, if we have a property that maybe was up to standard twenty years ago, then what standard should we, you know, look at to maintain? So we did put some language in there that if the structure of the premise was built in accordance with the UDO, a variance or pursuant to a PUD, it should be maintained in that state to the standard in which it was approved. So as I said, we split residential from commercial standards. Residential stayed the same for the most part, but we did update with some new standards and expanded on some of the requirements that were already there. Added some general maintenance language, some additional stormwater maintenance, landscape, water features, outdoor storage of items designed to be on the interior, that would be couches, toilets, things like that. Animals and pets and abandoned vehicles, just to make sure that we had an additional enforcement mechanism for those things. They are found in other parts of the code, but they are also property maintenance standards. So for the commercial property, these are all new requirements. Again, some just general keep up your property, good workmanship, adding, added grading and store, sorry, grading and drainage, stormwater maintenance, foundation walls, exterior walls, roofs, stairs, decks, porches, balconies, handrails and guardrails, window doors and hatchways, gutters, structural parking lots, graffiti, landscape maintenance, streetscape maintenance, lighting. There's quite an extensive list, as you can see, but we went through some of the issues that code enforcement has faced in the past and things that planning and zoning are seeing, and so we tried to address all of those in this updated language. One of the other updates we made was for trash, garbage, and containers and enclosures, just to make sure that they are in leak-proof containers, they're located in appropriate properties, that the enclosures are being maintained in the condition in which they're approved. The dumpsters shall be adequate to hold all garbage, covers remain closed, and then a big one for us was the gates and fencing shall remain, be maintained in good repair and operable. This is some of the language we added for vacant premises and structures. Again, we looked at, you know, what we've faced in the past, what we're kind of facing now, and tried to address those things and give timelines and deadlines to replace windows, doors, anything that might be broken, to address exterior lighting and some of those vacant structures, make sure that everything is lit up and staying safe and we're not creating unsafe environments. We created standards for the signs to be removed within six months of closing of business and replaced with white panels if it's an illuminated sign. And just a general catch-all, maintain the property in a safe, clean, secure, healthful, and sanitary condition. So like I said, we have some other departments now, other than just the Building Commissioner and Code Enforcement, so we gave authority to the Building Commissioner, the Department of Planning and Zoning, and the Health Department Director. These are all departments that may be out and about at properties and may, you know, see violations, and so they all have the authority under this ordinance to write these violations or enter into remediation agreements, things like that, and I'll touch on that in just a second. So we basically just started from scratch on the enforcement mechanisms, and we've got four essentially. One is just a straight citation for violation, that's just gonna be a ticket for violation. For residential, it's at a hundred and fifty. Commercial, two fifty. Vacant structures, two hundred and fifty. Garbage and trash container enclosure violations, two hundred and fifty. And those do double if they're not paid within thirty days. They're paid into the Ordinance Violations Bureau. If that violation is not addressed, or if they continue to have additional violations every thirty days, it's a new violation. We also can do an action to enforce compliance. This entails the city giving quite a bit of notice to a property owner to say, hey, your, your property is not in compliance, these are the things that you need to do to bring them into compliance, or the city's gonna enter into the property and do it ourselves, and then the expenses that we incur will be due to you, and if you don't pay them, they become lean on the property. This is all statutory based, there are steps that you have to take. I didn't reiterate them in the ordinance necessarily because state law changes occasionally, and so I just wanted to make sure that we reference the statute, and then if we have to take this step, we would just reference that statute, make sure that we give the notice requirements and all the timelines that are required there. The third is judicial proceedings, that's just kind of your traditional, you send a notice to the property owner, here are the things that you need to bring into compliance. If you don't, then we will go into Hamilton County Superior Circuit Court and ask a judge to issue a judgment of nowhere than twenty-five hundred dollars for a first violation, seventy-five hundred for a second and subsequent violation, and we may ask the judge for an injunction or some kind of special remedy, and I'd say, this is probably gonna be that situation where you have like a big cleanup and nobody is listening, and you need to go in and have the judge say, yes, you are ordered to clean up this property and/or you're going to be facing a pretty large fine. So this is over and above what the, we can do with the OVB and the citations there. And then the last enforcement mechanism is a remediation plan, so Planning and Zoning, Code Enforcement, or the Building Commissioner can work with these property owners and enter to a remediation plan, and it essentially includes the violation, the corrective action needed, the time period in which that property owner should be taking that corrective action, and then also a statement that if they don't come into compliance, they understand that the city will pursue additional remedies for this, which may include the citation, the going to court for an injunction or a large fine, and the action to enforce compliance. So that's twenty, thirty pages of red lines in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Lindsey?
I have a quick question, Lindsey. When I went through the document, the appeal process was redlined but not added in. Can you talk about that, please?
Yeah, so the old structure had more of a notice of violation, just basically you would send a notice to the property owner and say, you're in violation of this, if you don't agree, then here's your way to appeal this violation. Here, these are kind, that, that right is inherent in these mechanisms, so for the citation for violation, it's paid into the Ordinance Violations Bureau, which can be also appealed pursuant to the Ordinance Violations Bureau ordinance, and that can all be explained within the ticket. So typically what happens, you get a ticket, you go to court, you can deny, deny the ticket, and they'll set a trial date, or you can pay the ticket. So there are ways that you can, not necessarily appeal it, but you can have your day in court to be heard for that violation. With the action to enforce compliance by entering onto the property, it is all statutorily driven, so there are a lot of notices and deadlines that I didn't put in here because it is all statute-driven. And then with the judicial compliance, where you can go and get an injunction and a large fine, it's basically like a lawsuit. You would file a complaint, you would serve it, and then they have the right to come in and enter an appearance and basically tell the judge why they would not be on the hook for that injunction or that fine. So the right to be heard in court is all kind of inherent in all of these enforcement mechanisms already, so there wasn't really a need to have a right to appeal.
We can maybe talk when, before we have second reading on this, but I think an opportunity to appeal before you're looking at court might be something that we should consider, just a way to help people prevent going to court and facing those very steep fines.
Yeah, we can certainly talk between first and second reading, but I don't think our intent is to see a violation and say, well, here's your citation, or, you know, here's your lawsuit. It's gonna be more of a conversation, and that's how we've always done it, is we want compliance, we don't want to bring people into court. That's kind of our last ditch effort to get them to comply, but that conversation will still be ongoing with the property owners. It will certainly not be a, you know, just jump to a citation unless we come to a situation like with maybe an absentee landlord and we just can't get a response, then, you know, we might be looking more at a citation situation or an action to enforce compliance.
And what's the timeline from notice to, to, to the fines? What's the timelines?
So there's not a defined timeline except for in that second action to enforce compliance. There are statutory deadlines, you have between ten and sixty days notice to come into compliance. So we would send a notice to a property owner and say, you have ten to sixty days to fix A, B, and C, and if you don't, then we will enter onto the property and we will do it ourselves. And then there's some additional notice requirements in there before we actually get onto the property. With a citation, there's not really any timeline there, but it would be a situation where we see a violation, we've contacted the property owner, try to work with them, and then if they just would not come into compliance, or if they just don't answer us, then it might be time for a citation for that. But there's not any really baked-in timelines necessarily.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lindsey? Can I have first reading by somebody? John makes it a first reading. Thanks, Lindsey. Item sixteen. Still Lindsey?
Yep, still me. Lindsey Viddick, Corporation Council, for the record. This is an ordinance to approve updated fees for our fire department for basic life support and advanced life support for emergency runs and transfer of patients. This was actually brought before council a couple of months ago and kind of got lost in the shuffle, so did not get approved, but these are all fees that you've seen before. They have not increased from the first time we brought them. It's still seven hundred and fifty dollars for basic life support for a resident, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. It's still $750 for basic life support for a resident, $933 for advanced life support, and $1,159.33 for advanced life support two for the resident. So these are all fees that the fire department EMS charge whenever they have to respond to an emergency run.
Any questions on this item? If not, I'm going to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Cecilia.
Second.
Second by Tiffany. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Aye.
John Wengart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Deremer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Selena.
Second.
Cecilia. Second by Tiffany. Jennifer, back to you.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Yes.
John Wengart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Deremer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item passes. Okay, now we're on its, thanks Lindsay, item number 17.
Chief. Thank you, Council Chief Ed Gephardt. Here to request to create residential parking permits for a couple of locations in our city. There's two locations in our city that we've received numerous complaints from the community, and then we've also had numerous responses to both locations to try to alleviate and help with parking on all of those two locations. The first locations I speak of is King Judge, the second is the Alhuda Mosque and the temple on Lander Road. Both locations, I want to note, have worked to try to resolve consistently ongoing for almost two years, well over a year, where we've had complaints, community members and so forth, with parking happening during high hours at King Judge, where it's just invading the neighborhood in front of houses. There's things going on in there like urinating, drinking, bottles littered and so forth in that particular location, and over on, and what he's done there at King Judge is he's tried to add property, shuttle people to his business, so the business has tried to kind of alleviate, but it's not working to help to where I think this is something that may be a cure for us moving forward if you approve it. The second location is the mosque temple where on Fridays they have worship there, and it brings in a flood of traffic from outside of our city. So people just kind of go there to pray three times a day on Friday, and it's also becomes a high-parking during Ramadan, and they celebrate their Ramadan time as well. And this absolutely infringes on the neighborhoods around the mosque to where neighbors can't get through, it becomes a problem on both sides of the road. We've tried to alleviate this through no parking, we've tried to alleviate this through enforcement, we've tried to do what we could do at a legal sense up to this point. The mosque also has worked with us and has provided parking at the launch and so forth, and tried to get this rectified as well, but has not been able to get it done to bring peace within the neighborhoods and adjacent to it. We have met with both neighborhoods and taken concerns in and complaints in of what this process would look like. We do know that not everybody may be on board with this particular process, but it's the only way, as I, as Chief of Police, can see my way through this, because as the law sits right now, we can only do limited things when we have these cars parked in front of houses, blocking driveways and so forth. We can go in and try to enforce, but we can't only enforce certain things, like if they block the two-lane passage for emergency vehicles, or they get too close to a corner, or they block certain things, is the only time we can take action. So I'm asking for the help of the council to help me with this by creating a residential parking permit. And what this would do is a system where the police department would issue permits from the police department staff in the lobby, we'd make it as painless as possible for residents to come in, show an idea of where they live, and we'll give out a number of passes that they think they need for specific times of problems. Not permitted parking Monday through Sunday, 24 hours, seven days a week, during times that we explore that we're going to have these issues is what these permits will be for. We're targeting the areas that we've already had issues with and cars parking there, which will help to alleviate the calls that come into us and also help the neighbors have a peaceful night or evening when these things go on. So, specific times, specific days in and around this where this parking fine would be enacted, I'm asking for $150 towards violations for this parking fine. I'm asking that streets be added and subtracted as we go, meaning initially, we want to hit the areas that we think the cars have already been violating the parking, but also, we know that cars are kind of like water in the city of Fishers, so as we kind of set streets up, it's going to move those cars further back, so we're kind of have a large area in around these two locations that we can begin to enforce adequately, and those streets can come off or on as we go through the Public Works and Safety Board process. So it would transfer, if you supported it, it would transfer there to where streets could come on and off after we evaluate whether streets need it or don't need it moving forward in the city of Fishers. Like I said, we'll facilitate everything from the police department's lobby, we'll try to be respectful and get people in and out of there. We'll also, when we're enforcing, we'll use our discretion like we always do in every situation, and common sense prevails. So we're not looking to go in and just flat-target any and every car in both these neighborhoods. We're looking for people who are going to go in there and just stop normal life and productivity or the environment of the neighborhoods so we can bring peace to both neighborhoods. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, I was chatting with somebody before the meeting. What would be your recommendation to somebody who lives in one of these areas, and if they were having a large gathering on a Friday night, and they were expecting a lot of people?
Yeah, I don't think, well, I know, it's not thinking, Friday night's not going to be included. Right now, as we start, Friday, if it's, I don't know which location you're speaking of, can you tell me that?
I think we would highly encourage you to go to the lobby of the police department, get as many passes as you feel you need, and also, I think, to Chief Gephardt's point is there's discretion with the law enforcement folks to say, what we're really trying to do is curb all this influx of traffic, but if you and your family are having a graduation party?
Correct.
We're not, we're not interested in enforcing that on those folks necessarily, and so that would be my recommendation, you go to the lobby, get some additional passes, or if a police officer's out there, simply stop and say, we're having a graduation, and I don't want to speak for Chief Gephardt, but my guess is we would say, congratulations on your graduation, move on with your day.
And this is going to be very specialized at times in weeks that things are happening that we can see, it's not going to be an everyday permit for every night that they're having these gatherings in the neighborhoods. And again, to the mayor's point, we're going to use common sense, so if we go down and there's a large gathering, a senior party or senior high school parties, we know those kind of can clog up neighborhoods, we're going to understand that.
Perfect. Thank you.
I know Bill Stewart just texted me, and he's got a question or two for you, Chief.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, I just want to say thank you. Thank you and your team for working on this initiative for Heritage Meadows. It's a significant problem in that neighborhood, and I just really appreciate the diligence and the willingness to think of all options to try and resolve this problem. Also, committed fair fairness for himself in this matter as well, and I look forward to this passing.
I think too, tonight, just to reinforce, Council President Peterson, this is just enabling legislation. The actual specific roads and the times and the dates would all be set at the Board of Public Works, and so you guys could pass this, and all it would do is say that if the chief wanted to do this, he has the authority, but that, the actual roads, times, manner, that's going to be done at Board of Public Works. So this truly is kind of enabling legislation, if you will, but that, tonight, if you were to pass it, that doesn't mean tomorrow, all these are implemented, then we got to go to Board of Public Works and specify which roads, what time, and there'd be a legislative process for that as well.
Okay. Selena?
Yes, first of all, Chief, thank you, thank you, thank you. I mean, I know that we've, I'm not as familiar with the King Judge, but you've worked tremendously, I know, with Alhuda and the problems that both Councilor DeLucia and I have been having in our neighborhoods, so thank you for your support. But I do have a question. So, I had a lady that emailed me this afternoon, they work at home, she has two teenagers, they park their cars in the street, especially during the summertime, there's a chance that those cars are going to be on the streets. What if some of their friends come over and they don't necessarily have that, and they get a ticket? Can they bring that ticket to you? What do they do if somebody in their graduation party gets a ticket? How do we get that resolved?
Well, one, the households are not going to be limited to four parking permits, they have as many as they need to hand out if they should have visitors at any time, but let's say that that doesn't even happen, it'll go through the regular ordinance, and if, that will go in before Judge Inkey as well, so they'll have a chance to say this was a normal thing, or if the officers come to site, just come out and say, hey, we have permits, we're just friends of ours, and I'm sure common sense will prevail there too.
I also think we're going to try to be very specific about time, like, we're not, again, I think Chief Gephardt said it well, we're not looking to ban street parking 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We know when these are peak times, and we're going to really try to narrow the timing of this to just when we have these acute issues, so that 90% of the time, you can park wherever you want, and frankly, you don't even need a permit for 90% of the time. It's for those small windows where we really have kind of a real parking challenge. And again, I think people can still come forward at Board of Public Works and remonstrate or say, we don't want it on our road, or we want, all that can still be done at Board of Public Works specifically about the individual ones. What you guys are contemplating is, should we give the police department this tool to enforce parking going forward? And then the next layer of this is, okay, Board of Works, where and when? So tonight, this is really about enabling legislation.
This is just a first reading.
Correct.
We're not passing any tonight, correct?
Unless they suspend the rules.
Do you want to suspend the rules?
No. I think we ought to suspend the rules.
Again, I'm just, it was only put on my agenda as a first reading.
They put on reverse reading, but it's acceptable to suspend if you want to.
I mean, we're not in a, we're not in a hurry if there are residents that are upset about this or want to share their concerns, we can have another meeting with a public hearing. Again, it's not going to be on the specifics of their street, because those conversations are going to be had at Board of Public Works, but just generally, if people are concerned about the police department having this tool, then hold first reading and we can...
Well, I've gotten one that says to have the suspension, I got another one that says don't, we need a unanimous to suspend the rules, so I'm going to go ahead and...
I could just real quick, yeah. I mean, thank you, I agree 100%, and as you know, we've been in a lot of meetings. I did, you know, I'm in Sunbless Farms, and I have some neighbors here tonight, just confusion, I think, you know, give it till next month so we can answer that, you know, I think some are here. Ones I've talked to, I think it makes sense when you understand it, but, you know, we got a letter, you know, and a lot of people were not following it, especially in the parts of our neighborhood that weren't adjacent, so, yeah, that would be...
I don't want to speak for the chief, but we're eager to solve people's problems, but we're also eager to answer questions, and so we can...
And I fully support it, I just think just to allow people to chime in.
So, I appreciate the support, Councilman Deremer, to move this forward, but I, we're fine answering questions too.
Have first reading? Okay, so we have first reading. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Okay, item 18. Nathan?
Good evening, Council, Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources. I'm here before you to request an amendment to the 2025 salary ordinance. This request would simply add incentive pay to the police department list titled Executive Lieutenant. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any other questions for Nation on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you. Second by Tiffany. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Yes.
John Wengart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Deremer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Now we'll take a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Second.
Jennifer? Motion by John, second by Tiffany.
Who was the first?
John.
Okay.
Wengart. Now I have two Johns.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Yes.
John Wengart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Deremer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 19.
Good evening, for the record, Ross Hillary, Planning and Zoning Director. Item 19 before you is ordinance 022425D, which is the Garretot PUD. This is the final reading of this proposed rezone. So as a summary, it is 9.15 acres of land that is currently zoned R2 with a request to zone to PUDR. The address of the property is 11052 Cumberland Road. This is a project brought forward by Polte Homes. Summary of the development is a 21 lot for sale, single-family residential. An update on this since the last time you saw it, these will be side-loaded garages. The timeline on this, we had first reading back in February, we had a successful neighborhood meeting, which I'll go talk about in a second. In March, public hearing before Plan Commission and a final reading here tonight. The comp plan shows us as residential, suburban residential, which looks at a density ranging between two to four units per acre, which is aligned with this development. Here is the site plan and home elevations that are within the PUD. So this did go before our PUD committee would have home elevations approved. Since then, we have modified those home elevations, so if approved tonight, we will take these back before PUD committee to assist with staff's review. The site plan that you can see here, Cumberland Road is on the left, they would have a pond for detention along with tree conservation area in the back northeast corner, and a buffer area between both the neighborhood to the south and the neighborhood to the north with a single road in and out. The neighborhood meeting was held on March 13th, 21 residents attended that along with the counselor and Plan Commission or a planning staff member. Items that were discussed with Polte were buffering and landscaping, drainage, density and lot count, setbacks and the timeline. Rex Ramich will go over some of those items tonight. As mentioned, we had a public hearing at our Plan Commission, which was held on April 2nd. Eight residents spoke in remonstration against the development. Items included annexation, the desire for privacy or berm, there was a hydrologist report that was provided, concerns around noise, drainage, and then property values. Plan Commission is bringing forward to you with no recommendation tonight. As mentioned, it was on April 2nd, 2025. With that, I'd like to bring up Rex Ramich with Polte Groups to give a short presentation.
Good evening, Rex Ramich, Polte Homes, 11595 Meridian Street. A lot of, what's in my slide deck is very similar to what Ross just showed you, so I'll try not to belabor all that. There's a few extra points that I'd like to go over just real quickly. So again, familiar with the site, east side of Cumberland Road between 106 and 116. Ross touched on suburban residential as part of the comprehensive plan, that's anywhere from two to four dwelling units per acre. This site having 21 lots and just over nine acres, it's about 2.3 units to the acre. Site plan that you've seen, again, 21 lots, single cul-de-sac. There was a lot of discussion in past meetings about how that density compared, so I just wanted to do a quick snapshot of our acreage and then overlaying that same rectangle to the south along Deer industry, so just to kind of have that comparison, the 32 lots to the 21 lots. As Ross mentioned, one of the major changes that has been made since the last meeting is the front-loaded to the side-loaded architecture. So these are pictures or renderings of the previously proposed elevations. You see, they still have all the same character features. What we've done, and these are included in the ordinance now, is commit to 100% side-loaded. The only modification from that would be an example, so if you look at the top-left corner of that White House as an example, that's a two-car side-loaded home, if they want to add that third car garage and have the extra space, that would be a pull-forward design, similar to what you see in that top left corner. Homes are about 2,800 to 32, 3300 square feet, so... So they're, they're still the same size and square footage as we talked about previously. Again, a couple more pages of what those elevations will look like. Variety of materials, variety of architectural styles and features. So as we transition from a front-loaded house to a side-loaded house, one of the other conversation topics in past meetings was setbacks. So, uh, in the ordinance, uh, you can see it on the chart there. So there's a side, a minimum side setback of three feet, and that would be on the non-barage side because what you do when you have a side-loaded house is you artificially shift the house on the lot to make sure that you can access the garage. The driveway is pushed to one side and then that shifts the house on the lot. You'd still have a minimum of 20 feet in between houses on adjacent lots, so there's sufficient space in between the homes. And then I'd say the last topic of conversation that was brought up, not only at our neighbor meeting, but at the Plan Commission meeting, uh, and has been a discussion topic throughout, uh, is the drainage. So some of the folks to the south expressed, you know, real concern that they're getting a lot of water today and what would happen post-development. So we took a look at this, uh, and this is a little early. You know, typically this information is, is handled at the primary plan, development plan stage, which would be, you know, 60 days from now, plus or minus. But this exhibit shows you about nine acres coming south in a variety of capacities. You see those red lines? Uh, and where those red lines are heading to. So that's basically demonstrating all the water is coming south and it's coming onto those Deering Street neighbors. So post-development, the way this is going to work is we're going to have different easements and rear yard swales. And the way that the property is going to be designed based on current standards is that it's going to collect and capture that water. So all the water on the north side of the street is going to get collected and routed through these stormwater, uh, facilities and pipe on the north side of the street. As you can see, that flowing west into the pond. And then anything that would be centrally located or south of the street would again come back to the rear yard swales of those homes and then would get funneled west ultimately into our detention pond. So there should be about a 90% reduction in the stormwater runoff that is leaving the site today, which should vastly improve, uh, the drainage runoff concerns that people to the south are currently experiencing today. And then this is just an individual lot, just to depict again, uh, how drainage is going to work. So traditional lot, you know, water's going to flow away from the structure, but really want to focus on that rear yard drainage swale. And so the image that's kind of highlighted in red is the city's, uh, standard detail for how we have to construct those rear yard drainage swales. So from the house to the back of the lot, it will flow that way. And then from the actual rear property line flowing back towards the house, that way it's getting captured in that V-shaped, um, rear yard drainage swale. And then that's how it's going to get collected and routed to a pond. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you will have. But thank you so much for your time.
Any questions for Rex? Brad?
This is zoned R2. Why won't you develop that R2?
Uh, this, this site has an interesting geometric shape, so there's things that to develop this site or residential as a show, you can't develop it under R2.
All the neighbors are R2 or R3. They showed up at the Plan Commission meeting against this. And then for the last nine years, I'm the only one that's been fighting PUDs with side setbacks. And the side setback you changed from the Plan Commission to tonight, to three-foot side setback. You can't even put an HVAC unit beside that house with a three-foot side setback. And I was elected to represent the residents. And the residents do not want this. And many other subdivisions that you guys have done, as you know well from me, are very upset with the side setbacks and the cost forever now on these homes. I don't know why we keep approving PUDs. It doesn't make any sense to me. Let's just get rid of our zoning ordinance and let the developers do what they want. This is getting ridiculous. And I'm against this one again, trying to represent the people that put me in office. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions for Rex? You know, I'll, I'll make a statement since I sit on Plan Commission. And Brad, I, I certainly understand your consternation, okay? I'm in favor of PUDs because we push back on these developers really hard on, on some of the standards that go on that don't really fit into a direct zoning path, right? And we've done a really good job at, at doing that on a number of occasions to get additional architectural features, to get, you know, different things that we need in there to make what we feel elevated, you know, neighborhoods that we're putting in. And we're in a very difficult time with a lot of these infills that are going on. These are not easy projects to do. So, I, I mean, again, a, as I look at this, when this first came to us, there was a lot of consternation on the PUD committee just due to the architectural standards. And, and I want to compliment, you know, both Megan and, and, and even Scott, who kind of chimed in a little bit for us with some direction and, and really Polte, who came back and really fixed a, a large problem that we had at PUD committee with, with some of those architectural standards by making them side loaded garages. So, a-again, I'm in favor of this project only because I think it's a very difficult infill project. I think it's going to go ahead and enhance that, that whole area. It's going to help out with the flooding because you're going to, you've got to get through tack, you've got a very large pond in there. We know what's going on there. I mean, I get the fact that the neighbors have basically a park in their backyard now, but I can't take away the land rights from somebody. It's not our, our job. The, the landowners should be able to do what they want with their land within the constraints of what we approve here at, at City Council. But as I look at this, you know, on an R2 standard, I don't think you're going to get what you want there either, Brad. Now, I agree with you that we probably need to have a, a sit-down with our planning group to go ahead and do that.
Or ask for an R5 zoning.
To do that, but I mean, again, that's, that's for us to deal with probably at a work session. A- as it relates to this particular project, I think the developer has gone over and above to try to be amenable to doing the things that we want in our community to drive those standards up. And, you know, I think Megan would agree that they've, they've worked with us, you know, hand in hand in this thing. It hasn't been the easiest process always. I mean, I think you guys lost a lot or two there, which obviously feeds into your economics. So again, you know, I, I, I'm in favor of the project. I, I think it, it went from okay to good. A- and I appreciate all the effort that's been done there. So if there's no other comments or questions.
Uh, Rex, I do appreciate the comparisons and how you explained the, uh, upgrade on the drainage. I had a really good conversation about, um, stormwater capture and how, um, when new developments go in adjacent to existing developments that have been there for 15, 20 years, how oftentimes that new development with the new technology can improve drainage for existing homes. And I think that this is a real great opportunity for some of those homes on Deering. Um, I trust that you will, um, work very hard to, um, maintain some of the existing trees on the periphery. That's very, very important to the, um, the homeowners and those adjacent parcels. Um, I even talked to the, uh, the fire chief today about setbacks and just trying to understand. And he spoke about how much training they do to ensure that they can get their ladders in between, you know, those setbacks. And we spent a lot of time looking at that aggregate setback from the side of the house, past that, uh, driveway apron to the other home and how there is at least 14 feet there and sometimes 20. So I want to thank you so much because I know that Realtor to Realtor, we had some tough conversations about how important the comparisons are. So thank you so much.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Selena. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tiffany. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Aye.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
No.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
No.
Did he say yea?
He said no.
Okay.
So I think that was, I think we're at, well, it'd be six to two because Todd's not here, so motion carries. Thank you. Good luck, Rex. Okay, item 22, Ross.
Good evening, for the record, Ross Helly, Director of Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight is ordinance 061624B. Uh, this is for weather tight roofing, uh, which is a rezone request, uh, for C1 with conditions. Uh, this is the first reading. Um, before you tonight, again, is that consideration of 1.13 acres from R2 to C1 with conditions for a new business called Weather Tight Roofing. Um, the property is located at 13600 East 118th Street. To kind of put you where this is on the map, um, that large white box is the Kroger on, um, East 116th and Oreo. Um, so this is a parcel, um, that's kind of left behind right there. Uh, the summary of this, uh, project is the intent for a commercial office, um, with showroom and storage of materials. Um, there are conditions on this property which, uh, limits the use, uh, limits the lighting and limits that there is no outdoor storage. Um, the timeline for this project right now is to go before Plan Commission in August and potentially back to you, um, at the end of August. Other limitations, um, included limited to office, medical office, uh, beauty hair salon, day spa and nail salon. Um, in our comprehensive plan, this area is called out for neighborhood service center, um, which includes daily retail uses and professional services. Still land use of commercial and office, um, would be permitted. Here is a draft site plan and a draft elevation. Um, the developer would be required to extend 118th Street. If you've been on 118th Street, it ends at the end of the self-storage. So they would be required to, um, extend it to the end of their driveway, which is a little different than this site plan. Um, the developer would be required to meet all UDO requirements, um, along with the site plan and architecture. So again, these are just renderings for your assistance. Um, Ward Snar with Core Group is here to answer any questions. Uh, I'm also here to answer any questions.
Hello. Uh, well, the first time in your facility. Um, my name is Ward Snar, um, with Core Group. And I, we were hired to basically quit the rezoning and help, help the company with, uh, there's going to be an annexation agreement that will go along with it. And, um, I think Ross did a great job explaining anything and, uh, anything that you guys would have questions on. Um, I can try to help, you know, I, I did most of the layout and everything. Uh, I asked a lot of pertinent questions, uh, with the owners and, uh, he unfortunately couldn't be here today, but, um, I can try to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'm going to go, is this just first reading?
Yes.
Okay, this is just a first reading. Anybody want to give it a first reading?
Yeah, first reading.
John gives it a first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, on to item 21. Still you, Ross.
Yep, Ross Helly, Planning and Zoning Director. Item 21 is a resolution for the fiscal plan for annexation 25 dash one. Address is 10056 East 126th Street. It's a voluntary annexation of 1.35 acres. I have to answer some questions.
Any questions for Ross? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Selena, second by Tiffany. Uh, Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Item 22 is the final reading, um, the shipment property annexation, um, same address, 10056 East 126th Street. This is a voluntary annexation and this is the final reading.
Motion to approve. Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Tiffany. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Aye.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Ross. Moving on to item 23.
Item 23 is the Garretot Property Annexation Resolution. Um, address is 11052 Cumberland Road. This is a voluntary annexation, um, based on a rezone that was approved tonight, uh, 9.15 acres. This is the final reading.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Tiffany?
Second.
Second by Selena. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 24.
Item 24 is the Garretot Property Annexation. This is the final reading of the ordinance. Address is 11052 Cumberland Road. A voluntary annexation of 9.15 acres.
Motion?
Moved.
John? Second by Tiffany. Jennifer?
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John DeLucia?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad DeRamer?
Aye.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
Tiffany Deplessen?
Aye.
Bill Stewart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, we're going to move on to any other unfinished or new business?
I have an item. Oh.
What did, did you, any other unfinished or new business? No?
I just wanted to mention about the Juneteenth festival.
Okay.
So just a reminder that the city celebration for Juneteenth is on Thursday at Connor Prairie. Uh, there's, uh, the students from Fisher's High School are putting it on. They do it every year, so that's, um, that'll be on Thursday.
Thank you for your help in that as well, Councilman.
Okay, uh, we're going to go, move on to community comment and we remind everybody that the game starts in six minutes. So, um, we're all going to try to do that. So anyone wishing to come to the podium and, and share about whatever item you want to, please step up to the podium. You have three minutes in which to speak.
Hi, I'm Shelby, 1123 Meadows Drive, in month with the resident parking permits in King Jug. I think that's a great idea. I'm glad that these homeowners that merit a word, whatever your name is, brought it on, but we don't have an HLA because we've been there since 1861. Excuse me. But it's a great idea because come the weekends, special events, you can't get in and out of your driveway. You can just sit down on the road drunk, peeing, cursing at you if you call the cops.
Stop listening.
It's always a wonderful thing when something goes on at King Jug. And I think the resident permit parking is a great idea and it would help a lot and permit parking is a great idea, and would help a lot, and kind of make me happy, which is very important to my husband. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Custakis, I live on Morgan Drive, 8712 Morgan Drive. Couple of things. We have a real problem pulling out off of Morgan onto Lantern. I was appreciative to see that the utility box is going to be moved, I can see the new foundation there. That's going to give me an unobstructed view of parked cars that block my view on Lantern. And that's only looking to the north, looking to the south, I still have both the utility box and parked cars. Those cars are parked perpendicular, they should be parallel parking. I think you need to look at that, that would reduce, I think there's 11 spots north and south, take it down to probably six, but that would improve it. The reason it's hard to get out there, as well as on Francis and down by King Juggs, is not just visibility, it's also the speed of the traffic on Lantern, and so I'd suggest looking at ways to slow up the traffic on there, even though it's a school zone, people are going 45, 50 miles an hour. Our neighbors to the west, in their downtown area, they've put those raised crosswalks, it works, I'd suggest you look at that. On the parking, well familiar with the issues of King Juggs, prolific walker, they don't park on Morgan Drive. We have twigs, and unlike our neighbor down the street there, they're wonderful people that park in front of your home, they don't litter, they're kind, they're polite, and so we don't have that parking problem on Morgan, so we'll attend the Department of Public Works to see that maybe our road is excluded from that, because it'd probably make more problems for us to have to do permit parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have heard to you, that community.
So can you state your name and address for the record? Can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Daniel. Okay, I didn't even heard to you, that large community. I didn't even know that restaurant's name, located in Fisher's Port and Lightyear intersection. I was a big fan of music, pop music, classic music, but now I'm very sick and scared by music. Every time that restaurant playing loud music, my label, everyone's there, they move away. They said they're too old, they cannot sleep, scared by a lot of scary people walking around and parking vehicles around his house. Every second after he hits was a victory, they had to say, and now only music has people having a December. You know, that community was very quiet, peaceful. Now it's just an appetizer for the restaurant business. People start dinner, people walking around the park. After dinner...
Sir, we can't hear you.
That is dessert.
There you go.
After dinner, that is dessert. People walk around the community again, some are a lot of alcohol, very happy around, a brilliant atmosphere, a lot of scary people around the restaurant. Sometimes vehicles parked in front of my door, for all the reasons, if I waited for my yard to be ready. So we cannot argue with people, we encourage the owner of the restaurant, watching and control your people. You're not a big party of, what's that called, people, some are true, that's enough for that restaurant. If you cannot imagine people customs parking up in there, don't accept more people, because community, we need peaceful environment. We don't agree some kind of restaurants only, some are parked, some are closed, or that is, we should limit the restaurants with the parking, bothering people. Or we encourage like 10 years or 20 years, many students or friends, they need to pay money, that is ridiculous, we don't have anything. So we strongly...
Okay, sir, thank you, you're three minutes off. We appreciate, we appreciate your comments, I've got to keep the quorum going, so, next person. Thank you.
My name is Fred Schall, I live in Heritage Meadows. Daniel Wood, Eric Kaywood, was your neighbor, do you know?
No, I didn't realize.
Yes, he's one of our neighbors also. Eric went down because one of King Jugg's patrons almost hit his child turning around in his driveway. This is why parking isn't a issue in our neighborhood. I believe the park only, not only would it help our neighborhood, but I also believe it would help the police, and we know you're supposed to be there and not be there. We get these people in our neighborhood, we have a phone call, letting them know, hey, we've got people who are not permitted to be here in front of our homes, we'll help the police out and make this an effective program.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Kyle, I live in 11295 Meadows Drive in Morgan Meadows. Something I'd like to point out too, and I was told this 10 years ago when I lived in, Meadows Drive, not only traffic goes down, if Lantern is backed up, the fire trucks have to get down that road as an access road to get part of that. King Jugg is realistically a pain in the ass. It has been for a while, nothing against them, I'm glad they want to have a business here and hope they prosper, but they need to do something to get their parking under control. I know down by 106th Street, there's a big open parking lot there that's supposedly been developed for years, but hasn't happened. Park the parking down there, and show them up there. That's another place to go, and then you're going to get everybody in one place, and the cops may not have to run over God's creation to deal with it. So that's another idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Stricker, I live in Spineless Falls Community. I'm here to oppose anything further going on with the Pulte development, the rezoning, and just the development altogether. We've been residents and officials for 26 years. We've been in Spineless Falls Community for 23 years. When it was discussed later about enhancement and how the neighbors and the community think it's an enhancement, I disagree with that, and every resident in the community, in ours and adjacent community, would completely disagree with that statement, and I don't believe that they're going to do any enhancement except for the pockets of whole homes. It's taking away a whole forest that is in between the homes there. Right now, there's a lot of birds, a lot of species of wildlife, there's deer, there's bats, there's a lot of really great things for the environment that we can incorporate, we grew with all the forests there. I know they're going to take all the trees down, all the forests down, I'm really concerned about privacy, that's going to be one of the biggest issues that's going to be taken away. When they talk about the swales, building the swales there is going to take away all the vegetation, all the very large trees that have taken, you know, 100 years to grow. We paid $14,000 extra, we have a lot like that, as well as many of the neighbors in the area, and I think it's important, it's important as a homeowner to realize that it's also important to someone, not just a big house, that a yard and that's a hot commodity, it's becoming more of a hot commodity, you need to have a yard and landscaping. Of course, those sites are a little bit crashed, and the top half of the area, seven houses and ten, and some people might ask about yard privacy in the first 30 seconds of initial conversation. So that's just something to think about, because as we take away trees and grass, the side loaded garages are not going to make much of a difference, because instead you're taking away, it's going to be pretty more concrete, and now the view's going to keep up several cars, two to four cars there, so that definitely does not make a difference. In the comparison of 21 versus 32 homes that he showed earlier, that is, yeah, that's fewer homes, but 21 homes is mushed together in a much smaller area versus the neighborhood that you're able to look at.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Heather Hale, I live at 8443 Trappers Court, and it's a very quick request for the permit parking. One thing I do ask, I appreciate the ease of going to the police station to get permits, but for those of us that have already been dealing with it, maybe to make it a little bit less of a cumbersome, can all homes that are going to be involved maybe have an initial set of parking permit passes sent to each home, so that way we don't all have to come to the police station to get them, but if we need additional ones in the future, we could do so that way. I just ask that request, please. That's all I need, thank you.
8508 Pioneer Trail, and Heritage, nothing parking permits. Just this Saturday, I had a person parking in front of my house, and I was in my living room watching TV, and then I hear this screaming, my dog's going off in front of my house, she's yelling at me, she's cussing me out, because I parked my truck in front of my house. So this is not the first time, I've had to put camera systems up around my house to make my payments safe. My wife is sitting out on the front porch, she's been cussed at from their customers that's coming back drunk, whatever. So I just wanted to give you that insight, what we do with every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.